Okay, for our council meeting, today's session will come to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered republically responsible, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay, President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Agarjun?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Booker is not here. Councilwoman Burek.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor Cravitz.
Here.
Engineer Rogowski, not here. Engineer Minski, not here. Chief Myers, here.
Here.
Chief Neff?
Here.
EMC?
Here.
Uh, let's see. Kayla's here. EPC, here. Uh, Public Works?
Here.
Superintendent Huey and Manager Thompson is here.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, is there any, are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Hearing none, are there any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Vice President Anthony News, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agarjun seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comment. At this time, we invite any citizen here to speak tonight, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here for citizens' comment? Seeing none, moving on to Mayor's report.
Thank you very much. June twenty-fourth, firefighting in Mechanicsburg area exhibit opened at the museum. Township departments took part. Twenty-seventh, assisted with Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting and a key to the city from the mayor's office to aid doing piles new office in Mechanicsburg. July twentieth, administered the oats of office to Sergeant Ethan Paulus, a new police officer, Sheldon Bradley, and Corbin Dodd. Twenty-first, concert on the square. The twenty-ninth, chili cook-off at the park, the benefit for New Year's Eve event. Thank you, Daryl Westby. Thirtieth, opened Union Church to the public for recital held by the Hershey Violin Teaching Studio. August five, goes it to Simpson Library's run for reading held at Upper Allen Park. Good turnout for a fun run. August fifth and sixth, community three-day held at Soldiers and Sales Memorial Park. Activities, vendors, food, entertainment. Thank you, Jane Drake, Executive Director of Renaissance Mechanicsburg. Sixth, gave opening remarks at the donor reception held at the Simpson Library Learning and Book Center, forty-five West things, forty-five West Allen Street. Ninth, visit the cyber healthcare community fair at Memorial Park. New facility planned on Eastern Road. August twelfth to thirteenth, public book sale at the new Simpson Library Learning and Book Center. The books were organized, price to sell. So, Sunday thirteenth, they had a bag sale, ten dollars per bag. If you think those, the red agway letters are off the north side of the building, and they took in over twenty thousand dollars at this sale. Now, that's the end of my report. Uh, back in July fifth, agenda, we had a resolution for twenty-twenty-three honoring Recreation Director Tanya Brown's retirement. All of council signed that, to my knowledge. It has been given, or handed, or sent to her. I think she should have that resolution handed to her at a public meeting. Now, I'm going to get Tanya Brown, not as tough. I'll contact her, I'll see if she gets here to the council meeting, and we'll proceed from there. Now, if you have another idea of an act, Mr. President, let's have it.
No, I think we're in complete agreement. We were just, we are in complete agreement. We were just waiting on staff to schedule that with Tanya Brown, that she was leaving on vacation after that resolution was passed, and was not able to make the next move.
Should I should go through with it?
Uh, yes, in coordination with the staff.
End of report. Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda?
Salute.
Councilman Burek news, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agarjun seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Discussion and action on the purchase of camera trailer at a cost of one hundred thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the wastewater management department.
Is there a motion?
I saw you.
Councilman Burek news, is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Anthony seconds. Any discussion?
Uh, just brief note that that particular purchase was planned, and that's below the budget that was put in for last year.
Any questions for Superintendent Burek or Public Works?
Could you remind me what we currently do in lieu of this trailer? Is it contracted? It's all contracted.
Okay.
So this will give us more efficiency and timely response.
So you'll be able to do it in advance of something breaking, and take the camera down there and look. Does it, do you guys need training on it, or?
We will be training.
Mr. Superintendent or Mr. Manager, could you just briefly go over the benefits, the financial benefits of this purchase?
The benefits are, um, we've got lots of other, different, localized, we can figure out a problem, and, uh, we, we'll be looking to bring the issues, the significant impacts that we can take to address. So there's, which we, that's why I basically, um, we have, we have, we have, uh, so, obviously, we have, uh, this.
And we're expecting a, uh, a financial benefit from this.
A lot less, but it seems to be.
So I don't know if one of the two of you gave up. I guess what I'm trying to get at for the record and for the public knowledge is the financial benefit that we're going to receive by spending one hundred and ten thousand versus not spending. I'm sure that the financial analysis was done to determine what the cost savings would be with this unit.
It's not something that is necessarily, uh, for example, replacing the main, uh, it's in the main.
Well, that's definitely quite a file. Yeah, but how many of those types of requests could you envision on a per-atom basis?
Uh, we will be doing a lot of work. Uh, hopefully surrounded, uh, that is, uh, what, uh,
And this will lead to less traffic disruption if we're not digging up streets? Sounds like a pretty good financial proposition, as far as, uh, people for community. Thank you.
Um, no, like, replacing the main, uh, and, I think usually, uh, the, uh,
Wow. See, that'd be good. Great work, thank you. We won't have to call the outside contractor anymore because we have the unit, correct?
We'll be able to tell, uh, if the need becomes, uh,
Oh. Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to committee meetings, Borough Manager's report.
Thank you, sir. My report is published both in the packet and, and for the public. Uh, nothing particular to call out from the report. What I would add is, uh, I took a look at last, the last Borough Council meeting. I reviewed the video and, and, um, the actions from several citizen comments from that video, as well as the number of pending code violation enforcements have been executed in the last week. And some before I returned from vacation, um, were notified and, and the violators were, um, um, the violations were noted. So, we're at this point where lawn and yard growth is at its peak, and so all the violators are quite obvious across the borough. What we're trying to, to work on right now is, um, understanding when we're dealing with a irresponsible homeowner who lives in the home or some other scenario. And what we're finding is that there are a number of other scenarios out there that we're trying to deal with, such as abandoned property that hasn't been recorded properly. Extended summer vacations, not just, uh, I went away for the weekend and didn't mow the lawn, but moved on for the summer and didn't have anybody come look at, take care of my house. Uh, and, and what I've been working with Solicitor Cassidy on a number of, um, uh, mitigations for that, uh, including what we've done at four twenty-one West Simpson, uh, just in this past week, um, and, and working on the lean process to execute recovery of those funds. Uh, and we have a number of other properties that we're working toward that end here. So, I think, long story short, from a manager's report perspective, is we need to do a better job at code enforcement regarding, um, yard and lawn overgrowth. But it's a, it's not a, it's not as easy as someone complains and then, and then we go cite somebody. There's always more to the story, it seems, and so we do a lot of investigating. Um, I want to say half the properties that we're working right now don't have a, an owner of record who can be contacted via telephone. So, we're, we're, we're trying to do our best, track these down, um, but through, uh, my consultation with Solicitor and, uh, Matt and Jen's diligence over in codes enforcement, uh, we're gonna get better at it.
Quick question, Mr. Manager. Think and binder park project there, am I correct in saying that the walking path was a requirement of the grant?
Uh, yes, the, the, the grant, um, was for accessibility to the park. And, um, accessibility meant an ADA compliant walking path to reach all parts of.
Is it, is it possible maybe to, uh, to add that to the description of the project at, at any of our various channels, whether they be website, social media, and/or signage at the site?
Sure.
There've been a lot of questions about why the, why the walking path is there. I think when you first look at it, it might, not you, but a general observer, it might not be completely transparent.
Okay.
And so to add that, might be a nice explanation that that's one of the requirements of receiving the grant dollars. And was that project fully paid for by grant dollars or their borough dollars?
Um, no, there were, the borough ended up paying, I want to say about twelve thousand dollars for the playground equipment delta. So the, the walking path, the, um, uh, returning the baseball field to green, that was all paid for by the grant. Um, the playset will be paid for by the grant, short about twelve grand. And, um, the, the motion that we reviewed with council, I want to say back in March or April, combined that with the new playset in, uh, Memorial Park, and, um, and it allowed, I think, about twenty-seven thousand overrun, and it's only gonna be about twelve.
So, so another thought, I don't know what other council members may think, but it might be nice to see a percentage of the project that was paid for by, uh, grant money. So again, that our constituents can see that we're aggressively going after dollars that are not directly tied to their tax perks. And, uh, and I think it's a nice way of showing folks that we're making great improvements administratively, and those are winding up on the street. I don't know how other council members feel about that.
I think I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've had questions about the walking path too, but I, I've always told them that it was part of the grant that it needed to be, so.
Right, I think, and admittedly, it's a detail that, um, people have approached me about on the street as well, and, uh, in the office. And we reviewed the requirements back when we accepted the grant, um, but we haven't done the best job with the communications, the continued communications about, um, uh, how the park came to be, um, and then, and then, uh, what the requirements were. So, so it's worth doing that. Uh, we also have, um, some project plans that will come up this fall for Think and Binder that will also refresh that, uh, and then add to that park, uh, next year with more grant money.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
I agree with that, and I think we should add to it, that at the end of the year, we should probably brag as to all the grant money and sum up the total that we release to the public. Because I think here, you and your staff worked really hard to supplement our budget, and that should be recognized.
Yeah, and, and it was a focus of this council too. This council's been very clear about the fact that we're wanting to find those free dollars on the street, so, it's my thing. Uh, since we're on the topic, if I could just transition to Center Square project, those like things are coming along beautifully, great jazz concert, uh, recently. And, um, I don't know if we could do the same type of thing there. I know Councilman Booker, I think I can say confidently that he would love to see some recognition that it's, it's state, federal grants and private donations, no tax dollars at work. I think as we move ahead on that project, that's gonna be really important messaging. Oh, no, I, yes, indeed. I think the messaging is what, um, some of us might really want to make sure there's a spotlight on, so that it's not tax dollars, and it's not dollars that are being diverted from road repair, for instance, or other areas, that this is money that is independent of that and making improvements, which is, thank you, Dr. Drake.
So I think we have to be cautious, because there is, I think the borough is administering it, but I think we need to also understand that it's coming from the Mechanicsburg Downtown, um, partnership, and have that separation, because those donations are coming into the five oh one three C, not necessarily to the borough. But I understand the confusion as to all of that, so I'm sure we've been working on messaging and building up, um, solicitation.
Like, the messaging, how it nice?
Yeah, that was important, communication.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Finance Administration and Organs, Mr. Anthony?
Uh, just a couple of things I'll note. We're having a, uh, quarterly, uh, budget update on the seventeenth of August at six PM. All are welcome. Um, at that point, I'd love to maybe, uh, review, uh, with staff, the monthly revenue and expense report that we got. This is a fabulous report. I just want to kind of poke through a little bit that, at that time, if that's a good, I guess. That's all I have for now.
Public Works on Safety, Mr. Booker's not here, so we'll turn it over to Councilman Burek.
Thank you, President. Superintendent Huey, would you like to report or add anything?
The only thing I do have to add is, on your report of, uh, the President's design, you know, which we set up in the back, uh, this project is done, uh, a few years back, and, uh,
Estimating the timeline?
It's really, uh,
Wonderful.
We're trying to, uh, uh,
Anything else? Any from the council, or superintendent? Thank you, sir. Engineer Minski? Nothing. Public Works, let's go to, uh, Mr. Mayor. When you got, hello.
Thank you, it's a movie day.
It's nice to have you here. No, I couldn't be there, sadly. It was wonderful, right?
The people were wonderful, and the weather was, uh,
Weather was perfect. Well, the food we had, we got sixty chicken breasts, so, or half chicken. Yeah, that's well done, you're fine, all right. Anything do you like to, uh, highlight or report, other than your wonderful experience? Nothing, anything from you?
So I'd like to, I'd like to thank CH publicly for him and the team's work on crosswalks in June and July. I think the plan that he's put together and the way he's encouraged the team to make progress is, it's, it's worth talking about in public, so I'd like to thank him in front of you all.
I would concur. We've received a lot of, I think, good feedback on, uh, the crosswalk improvement plan, and, as well as the crosswalks that were done by, uh, Public Works Department.
Congratulations.
I set off the hot chocolate.
Oh, it's a little bit too warm for that.
Engineer's not here, let's move on to Public Safety. Chief Myers? Nothing. Uh, Chief Neff?
Yes, uh, maybe, uh, we're all, as I know, myself and the party board, I mean, before we were, uh, I have a book in there, that tells all about public, uh, how we, you know, The other report I have is that, uh, the party board, this time still, real, you know, uh, it's, you know, it's, uh,
Thank you, Chief. On that brief topic, I'll just, uh, have a quick comment that I had shot it down, that I'd like to share officially for the record about Chief. When Chief Neff spoke and offered, uh, he offered clear and easily understandable explanations to many of the questions that came up during the zoning hearing board. Dare I say, he was the bright spot of the, of the hearing. The information that he shared brought a great deal of clarity. And my impression was that he greatly helped in the understanding of the project and the many elements that go into the project. He, he clearly has significant knowledge about the elements of the project and the operational needs of the department, and has thought them through. The one thing that struck me is, as, uh, especially nerdy, which is a positive comment, was he knew the exact turning radiuses of the vehicles and how the tarmac impacted that and the curb placement and parked cars on the opposite side of the street, and the distance from the door to the middle of the yellow line at Station Two, and so it was, it was very refreshing to hear that level of detail, and it brought a lot of, um, confidence to the project. And I think it's gonna be great to have his voice sharing that publicly, we can encourage him to do, because it, I think it changed the minds of several people sitting, listening to the information that was being presented at each, and it was all in the positive. But Chief, thank you very much, and that was. I'm, I'm sure that the challenges that are being faced right now are gonna be able to be overcome, so. I'm not gonna ask you, are you ready to get the sword? Yes, okay, I cleaned that up. Very empty world.
Uh, two things that need to be updated in my report. Firstly, the current manager had to create this, uh, new, uh, draft language. So next step for that is to create a form, and then, uh, actually begin to advertise that, uh, before they're doing, uh, the, uh, and the other, it might be, uh, the first church of God, communities center, regarding their uses of shelter. They have activities every day, every week, so they're available. Uh, so my next point, if you go to Upper Allen Township, I know there are several large churches in Upper Allen Township that are fairly close to Barclays and Mechanicsburg. And I want to check in with them and see what they use as, uh, shelters, uh, and then see where we can go on this special. I do know that at least one of those churches is always, uh, a willingness to participate. One of the others, I think I can flip somebody who's on council, see if they might be willing, and I attend the other one, so I can, uh, make some progress.
We do coordinate with the school district right now, by the way, so we have precedence in that other church.
So it'd be a shelter if we need to have, like, if we have severe weather, and we need to shelter people overnight, if we, if we have a large fire, and we need to shelter people overnight. I had a meeting with the Red Sox, and we, we, uh, we, uh, they're always looking for shelters. Churches are one of the hardest places to use a shelter, because certainly of them have events going on all the time. But some of our larger churches in the area probably have the space where they could be part of their facilities as a shelter unless they're having other activities.
Is this, is this space like the first church of God's human room on Main Street, not more than that?
It may be, uh, it, it's a matter of, they have to be, they have to meet a, a number requirement, but yes, uh, over a thousand, uh, if, uh, there has to be eighty-eight and twenty. Uh, I think they have to be, uh, uh, well, um, it's, it's, uh,
It brings in a lot of windows, and that's, it's a piece aside. Thank you. Anybody have any things for any of the Chiefs or members?
I'm just excited for the special needs registry. I think it's so needed, and thank you guys for getting that done. It'd be great for the borough.
Municipal Community Outreach, Councilman O'Neill.
Yes, just to highlight, as the mayor reported earlier, it's worth repeating, the library book sale did raise over twenty thousand dollars, which is amazing. School Board report, um, there was no school board meeting in July, uh, first days of school, I say days of school because it's somewhat staggered, but the main opening day is, uh, eight twenty-eight and then eight twenty-nine.
Good job.
I was a little more proactive this time, looking at the, uh, the last borough, or the last meeting they had, so. The last thing I went for council to be reminded of, um, Sarah Martin had sent us proofs to review, video proofs. If we could review those this week, and if you have any comments or acknowledgements, would you send those along this week, if possible?
Thank you. Community and Economic Development, back to Councilman Burek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Councilman Anthony, would you like to do the loan review?
We have no report.
Excellent, thank you, Councilman Anthony. Uh, the Hightown Program Services Manager Rebecca Eric is not here. You've received her report already. Do we have any questions about her report? The only questions, um, a question that I had were two. Uh, number one was a, a sign, uh, permit issue that I spoke to the manager about at the BML on Main Street, and you'll look into that, thank you. The sign looks nice, I just don't know if, if they were aware of the permit. And the second is, uh, Mr. Manager, could you give us an update on the Chamber of Commerce, uh, land?
So, last update is that they acknowledged having received, um, So, last update is that they acknowledged having received, um, the denial, the, the, the disapproval of their proposed, um, uh, contract terms. And before I left on vacation, I made a phone call, um, to the, um, to their leadership and said, hey, do you have an update? And they said, um, we don't meet again for another month and then, and I'll talk to them about it at that meeting. Which I assume would have been the end of July at that point. And so, uh, another month would have been the end of August. So they, I guess, meet in a couple of weeks. We'll probably get back to us after that. I, I don't really have, because there's no contract with them, other than calling them and emailing them and saying, please do something. Um, you know, we haven't really talked about what the next steps. Um, I have some ideas. I just don't know how legally sound they are and I probably need to, to work on them with this. I'm not sure we have very much foundation to start an enforcement mechanism without any existing contract.
I suppose we could, we could begin proceeding for eviction. But I'm not sure that that's the will of this council at the moment. But I think that we do want to know what the next steps are, what you would propose the next steps to be. So perhaps at our next appropriate meeting, we could have a report presented to us with viable options that council could discuss and give guidance to you in the office about. Would that be okay with me?
Of course, yeah.
This is like, it's lingering, lingering, lingering.
Yeah, I, it's purposefully lingering. I mean, it's not me, it's purposeful ling- lingering on, on them. They obviously don't want to engage in the conversation. Um, and so I'm just, this is new territory for me as a borough manager. Not really sure how much stormtrooper I can bring to it. Um, but we'll find out. I'll talk with solicitor and figure out what we can do. And then, um, we'll go from there.
I think that'll be good. Does anybody have any input?
Uh, my input would be, I have a great relationship with the leadership and, um, employees over there, so happy to engage with you if you would.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much. Okay, Planning Commission, nothing to report. Armed, Councilman Agar.
Um, we did not need to do tornado.
That's a good excuse. Partnership League is on, Councilman Agar.
Yep, um, so I joined the About Face Grants, um, that was in Rebecca's report, so I'll be helping out with that. I'm excited to, to add that to my tasks. Um, as you guys all heard, Community Day went off, um, without many issues except for I did get stung by a bee. Um, so, but I don't blame Dr. Drake for that. Um, it was a great event. It was very well attended. We know that the attendance was up. Um, and there was lots of great vendors. So thank you for all of that hard work. It's great seeing all of those families come into the borough and enjoy our parks. Um, and then, uh, I also want to remind everyone that we are still doing our concert series on the Green, so it's the last one before the end of the year. So please come out on the eighteenth. I've seen a lot of, um, folks around the table there, but I'd love to see everyone out there on Friday. Um, I pop popcorn, so please come out and do that. We also are planning a Mugs and Music. Uh, last meeting, we approved, um, to lift the ordinance for open, um, containers in Mechanicsburg. Um, just as an update, we have a lot of great bands booked. The Rivers Band will be, um, the big band that will be there. So I hope to see everyone out there with a little mug, only if you're twenty-one and up. Uh, but you can come and listen to the music if you are not twenty-one. Um, it'll be a great thing. The other thing, I just wanna give a little update on the shape of the board. Over the last couple of months, we've been able to recruit a lot of new members. And we have businesses that, um, business owners that have joined. And we're really excited about the new energy that's coming forth. And we have a couple, um, we have at least two new potential members that we're vetting. And, uh, in November, we're all gonna come together and work through the bylaws and just make sure that we have all of that going for us. But there's a lot of energy, um, brewing. And we also have the event for, what is it, the Man of the Year? The Person of the Century-ish, something. I mean, he may be sitting up here. Um, I can't remember the date, John. Do you happen to remember the date?
I think it's, uh, the October, October twelfth.
October twelfth. October's gonna be a busy month, so, um, look for those things online. There's a lot of great events and a lot of great energy. We're excited for what's happening on the partnership. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you very much. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you. Property Parks and Recreation, Councilman.
Uh, nothing to report from the Rec Board. Um, I did get a written report from, um, Councilman Booker for Shade Tree and E A C. Um, he noted that a Reduced Reuse Recycle Subcommittee of the E A C was formed and has had two meetings. The last one was August tenth. That committee consists of three E A C members, three citizens, and E P C Arnold. Uh, the Grow with the Flow Garden at Memorial Park continues to grow pumpkins for a fall carving event. Uh, as per the consent agenda, the E A C meetings have been changed to the first Thursday of the month. Uh, they were running, they had like back-to-back meetings with Shade Tree and E A C and they were, they were running into each other, so they separated them. Um, the Shade Tree Commission will be hosting the Tree Tenders Training on September twelfth. Um, information on that and signups are on Facebook. Uh, I'm not sure if it's on the website or not. It is on the website, okay. And, um, what else? Uh, the Fall Bearu Tree Program Planting Plan has been distributed to members by, um, E P C, or, yeah, E P C Arnold. Uh, do you have anything to add on either?
Um, I can add to the Bearu Tree Plan. Um, so that is a grant we applied for in the spring. Um, they have another grant available to spot that we applied for. Um, so that plan was for where to put the trees. So it's focusing mostly on thinking binder with, um, adding some trees along Cactus Street. And then planting some in Memorial Park, uh, both in the front of Memorial and back towards the garden area. Um, and we're getting some redwood trees, so that'll be pretty awesome.
Oh, awesome. That's very cool, very cool. Um, and then we do have one, um, agenda item for discussion to add two alternates to the Shade Tree Commission. And the note on that is, um, they're looking to add Mike Granky and Matt Brown to count toward a quorum in place of one regular member, not a ten. When there's trouble getting a quorum, they'll have two alternates.
So, uh, my concern with that would be that it has to be, I believe it would have to be in the ordinance. That they could be alternates in order to take the place of an appointed. So I think maybe just, maybe we should look for that, this solicitor's plan, is that Could we do that before the next?
Yes, I, I mean, uh, you know my thought on it, which is, um, we're all aware that we've applied for a very significant grant that would support Shade Tree. Um, and we probably need to look at the entire, not just ordinance, but law. Um, to make sure that when, when we do receive that grant, when we're approved for that, that the, the committee itself, the commission itself is built in such a way that they can manage the execution of those dollars in the most effective way. It's very large over a long period of time. We just wanna make sure that they're prepared to do that.
What does the structure affect?
Uh, was it five years and?
Five years, five hundred thousand dollars, and a dollar-for-dollar match. So that, that match was, um, can also be matched with income services. So we had a pretty substantial, um, volunteer support fund that we're gonna have to create as a part of that as well.
Just so I'm clear, five hundred thousand dollars over five years, essentially a hundred thousand dollars a year. Is that the dis- disbursement?
Right, matched with a hundred thousand
For a dollar or?
Service, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that way exactly. I think it's more of a, it's not, it's not dollar, it's not a hundred grand each year.
I'm sure.
It's a little bit different plan.
And how much time do we have in fillback grant?
Um, they announced the grantees, um, October first, I believe. So we'll find out by then if we receive that. Um, and then I believe the grant would start twenty twenty-four.
January?
January.
So we would theoretically have to have the Shade Tree Commission in a, in a better place by when? December?
Uh, I believe so, yes. As soon as we find out that, that we are, uh, going to receive that grant, we need to do everything we can to, to prepare them. And the staff to be able to manage.
And that is all I have to report.
Personal committee?
Not the court.
Any other citizens comment? Any other?
Um, I was, baby, you know, I was doing my brother. He said, I'm excited to see so many people. The help that communities are offering, uh, we were there.
I have a lot of video. I'll go back and look.
It was, uh, it was Anthony was there early and, um, helped us set up the Uh, and as I look around, of course, the mayor was there and let us And that's why I'm hanging over the park, even on top of it. So dramatic. The H S fifty-two that was just Also, uh, the mayor's under arrest. If you're not away, you're handling the part without the usual I know you talked about I have to tell you, the C H takes the media for five.
I'm driving there for me.
So, I, so just a big thank you. This is our largest P U D A, about sixteen hundred people attended. Uh, we have, uh, some, uh, theater that gets probably up a little bit higher than we a success all around despite the So, thank you for, uh,
Thank you, Dr. Drake. Thank you.
The Fire Department, that's here, is gonna have to go first. We can drive around the grid as well.
Well, that was siren.
Would you like to go around this sewer camera truck that you're gonna
We'll prop it right on top.
Any other business?
Um, I just wanna note the first two weeks of the Food Waste Program have been very successful. I'm getting a lot of good data from that. Um, and that's just the first week of twenty, so we have eighty more residents down the line to do. Um, and the high school students from the Abidam Club finished the benches, um, and they look magnificent. So I'm excited to get those put in the park.
Are we gonna do a little Sam money moment for them in the talks?
Absolutely, yeah.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing.
I just wanna add my accolades for Dr. Drake. Um, it's a monumentous event, putting together all of those things. Um, so that you had the largest ever. And a, and a great event with all the help that you had. It wouldn't have happened without you, so thank you.
Uh, just a quick thing, it was touched on earlier. So at the zoning board hearing that we had, it was, uh, an outcome that was unexpected by many, and I count myself in there. And while we all know that the zoning board's authority is independent of Borough Council, they're a separate entity completely. They're not under, uh, the supervision of, of this organization. They, they were very clear about one thing, exceptionally clear, which is that they were not making the decision based on the merits of the project, the need of the project and the borough, uh, or the value of the project. They were making it based on, on other factors. So I think this thing gets important to note that. Thank you.
Um, I just wanna say, let everybody know that we're gonna find
Great. Thank you for your work on, uh, We're adjourned.
Uh huh, right. 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 They've already worked this in nineteen sixteen, seven. Okay. And council This is their land, your
It's our land.
It's your land.
It's our land. It's their train.
It's yours video.
And they don't pay us anything. And there's no arrangement. There's no requirement for maintenance.
They're like, go ahead, it's our turn.
Yeah, and so we drafted a, uh, our new lease agreement.
And they're not in a rush to accomplish that.
Hmm, because what are they gonna do? Yeah, what are they gonna do? Train car, like, it's
What are you gonna do?
Right.
We're gonna scrap it?
Yeah, and so it's not, there's not a lot of there's, there is no motivation on their side to take action. And I just continue to work with Jeremy, who's their current executive director. And he just they took very personal and serious offense to us saying Yeah. And then, and then asking them for money. And we're talking three hundred dollars a month. Is the lease, total lease.
That's right.
No, no. Hey, ma'am. I wanted to thank you. Well, I don't know what all these little kisses about community But now I'm glad I was out of the country.
Nice.
You see this beasting from your park?
You know, you should have said that in front of Luke, cause he wants to make a pavement. He wants to make our town be sent, be silly.
You took a pill? You took a pill?
From a stranger?
I knew it was a person, but it was I slept really good.
Look at you, you are so qualified.
Yeah, this Thursday. After tomorrow. Yeah.
We're gonna charge, with this I don't know, thirty-five dollars an hour.
I'll talk to him. I'll talk to Mr. Anthony. You wanna go first?
Yeah, no, no.